Want to talk about all the other, you know, constraints about a long term map that you want to think about. And, and the rest of your locals, all which, all which old. And, uh, so that would be a really good example of why they had to include the, um, the mixed use, uh, situation.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't know why it, something popped up on my screen that said the meeting was ending in ten minutes. So, I.
We just, are we still at least recording?
You're recording on this, so continue. You just won't be able to share that map anymore, unfortunately.
I could discern. Whatever maybe you want to say it, um, but yeah, that's exactly the right example of. That's something that would have to go to Bennington, wait six months, have fifty thousand dollars worth of studies done to get permits. But now you'd be able to permit it, you'd be able to consider the environments and benefits of this. And whether your sewer system can handle the, the effluent and things like that. And, and not have to take it down or up to Bennington and have all the negatives that come with running through the two fifty process, which can take project that can they find usual sense and they get to a progress.
Okay.
That makes sense. Do you have an overlay for the, um, the existing sewer, what do we call them in those areas?
Sewer service areas?
Uh, I, I can and I do it, but I, I really, I generally rely on the, the sewer mains. Because that would be helpful for this particular map. Like, most people don't know, like, we can view the service area. That's something, uh, but we could use, and importantly, the people who review this at the top of the state level, need to have to get it validated. When you're saying there, utilities there, there's utility. Um, but yeah, I, as part of this, I do have the sewer, um, service area colleagues from the city that I can use. And they did underline part of this, uh, work, so.
I think that's been sort of what we've been looking at is those, those as the constraints and how far can we push it out? And it's totally within those constraints and it's been hard because our maps aren't attached to any of these other maps and we haven't been able to see what Ben and Dar.
It's really, really a messy thing and one thing that, like, we're trying to improve our ability mapping. So as part of this, this was something that I built a unified, like, county by town's that has all your sewer lines, all Bennington sewer lines, all them. Um, and, and eventually, for East City, hopefully in the next week, I'll have your water lines too as part of that. Um, I have everyone's water lines except for your six parks.
Oh.
But no, it, it's, well, you're, you're the only, like, fire district model in our area that is not Dorset and Dorset. Has already built a lot of money in the fire districts, so their maps are probably new. Or at least E Source is relatively, it's old, but it's two lines, so it's not a map. Um, so, but yeah, I manually rebuilt the maps in North Bennington and Arlington and Shast where you can handle your, uh, round manual just maps. So it's not like this is rock if I need to look at a map. Um, so we'll rebuild that.
It's just tedious.
It's tedious, but it's like, but it's also you learn a lot of municipality, like you know in where they put their. It's a really helpful thing as people like us to really get deeply embedded in your municipality and understand where you made or the big part choices of, of where to, where sewer investments and so.
So just on, through now, so you have this map, what are the orange and yellow?
So these are, so the orange and yellow zones, the orange is the transition zone, which is an area that, that wants to pass some road off at times, but needs utilities to get there.
Okay.
Uh, so that's like, so south, South Town Center, yeah, the utilities will extend down toward the east side. So it's in the transition zone.
Which we've talked about that in, in meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that area and, and also that's also down by much of a recorder issue that, that, that in your case, because we don't have river recorders, the pink village area, um, cannot be mapped in river quarters unless you have regulations. Which is why you have these situations like, this is all built up, but you have some conservation area in the middle because that's what it. But, uh, so.
But the sewer line.
The sewer line does go there, so like, not only if you have river recorders regulation, this will, um, but that's something that, uh, we can't map. You could put it in the center, the center can have some of those connections, but.
And the same is true of the yellow or?
The yellow is just their rural general, um, which in many towns, there's a lot more like their rural residential zone. But in yours is a lot different. It's mostly characterized by small lot development. Um, so the parcels on these, these yellow areas are primarily a lot smaller than the ones that are in the, the blues greens. The blue, this like, this like aqua color is your, is the rural item forest, which is farms and parts of their experience. And then the green, which is conservation, is areas that have wetlands or things that are development constraints that you really keep me holding a lot in, or are, are we in some state conservation program, uh, like the lanes or something like that? We can use the data from them to actually underline, like, the use of this. Um, but that's not really important for someone like that today, but it can end it. But very much when you're, when you're talking about your, your FOU process and your FOU map as part of your plan, uh, we're happy to give you some guidance on that and share these maps because they, they're what are it, are traditionally what the current map into the state plan. That is not, it's probably not the best for your, your case at where you're at in the plan. But if I were a smaller town and I could top pace this mapping in my plan and had one less need for the work on the plan, then all kinds of, so exactly, yes. Uh, so, uh, but it does also give you a language through which the state is talking about this. So it can help inform your FOU map. We're happy to talk about that as you get to, in, into where you want to do that.
So our, our question is, but an opt in or opt out?
Opt in or opt out and?
It's, it just opt in. So if you don't.
You say nothing?
You're out. Yeah.
If you decide you want, you want these exemptions in some or all of the areas that make the map, then the select board would need to make a resolution at a meeting sometime this fall or maybe very early next year to say, we want to be part of this process and this is where, and then it would be, um, that would be sort of incorporated into the regional plan that we're working on. Uh, and when our regional plan is approved next year, that would all just, it would like go once our.
Does your one D, the exemptions to come through with the issue?
Correct.
Yes, yeah, so it's opting in to, to be out, uh, which is very completely.
Yeah. So if we, if we choose not to do it, then all currents, two fifty regulations so fine.
Yes.
And, and they just apply directly to two fifty.
Yes.
So as we have members of the DRB here, do you guys run into issues with that if we, any kind of normal basis now we're going, we have?
Not too often we get a big project, per month of project labels.
No, most of it's just, uh, it's.
Smallish, throw the house, that's the main thing.
Most everything, I think it's come to, last few years, I would say, easy, easy few years. I think it's mostly just been, uh, you know, lot line adjustments and all types of thing. Somebody who ended to put something in, a bigger garage or something else and that's.
We'll think of it as two fifty, yeah, not as active fifty stuff.
Like in your conversations that you're starting to have about your town plan, are you identifying, are there obvious development opportunities or projects that get kicked around that you, that you think could come down the pipeline?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, there, there's always wish lists.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have some, like, no dependent projects that ever have come down the pipeline. Like, we've talked about wanting to see about expanding, uh, sewer availability up through here, up to like past Dollar General, up past, uh, well, well, identified groups, but up past the snowshoe place up through there.
Yeah.
Trying to make that more, more appealing for economic development. And we kicked around talking about expanding sewer, maybe down past the trailer parks, down toward Stewart's that way. Like, what would be the feasibility of it? What would be the cost? And it comes down to like, for me, like a cost benefit analysis, like what would the direct impact to the taxpayers be versus what would be the potential economic benefits of it? Like, I don't, I personally have no interest in burdening the taxpayers with another twenty-three million dollar bond to get an extra hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes.
Which is a very, very reasonable approach to all this. And starting with, yeah, with the, your plans, future land use map is a great way to start that conversation up. If you set the boundaries early and you say, this is the general direction, you can explore the utilities later. It doesn't bind you to anything. And, and certainly something that is meant to be aspirational as part of the, this process.
Yeah.
So, so like, our boundaries probably would be narrower than your boundaries for these villages, like some ambition here it sounds like. So, so it's, it wouldn't be surprising if, if your process being so, people were, you're planning for at least eight years. Really, you want to plan in like ten to fifteen years to set up, be able for a labelings. So that's, so when you're looking to the future, getting these maps, having some dreaming in the maps is not a bad thing. A lot of people are very conservative with their maps and try to say, but it turned into a map of what's already there and what couldn't.
Well, that's where we could do is, is to put a map of where the system currently is.
Yeah.
And basically put numbers to it saying, in this, in X area, we could accommodate Y amount more units.
Yeah, and you're pointing, we'll have a U hill. So I hope when you do that, it's all, you know, the ticket for you in half an hour. Uh, because that's, and that's part of our, like, or mission here. So, um, as we get toward the end, into your planning process.
Well, the next round, we can apply for the grant.
Yeah.
If we get through, that's definitely, we would have already ended doing that.
Exactly. And we think that you guys have a really great shot at that. Um, we're excited to see you apply, um, through this fall, knowing that the other projects are potentially in white line, there's just.
Yeah, like, we have some great ideas, we just definitely need help with the light work and language.
Yeah, we do, so, heck, with that, I mean, no, like, because this, this map that we're working on is going to be outside of whatever that project is, um, it'll be a bit more conservative than, than something that'll, that'll be on the other side of the business. That, so, but ultimately, the, I'm glad we have that, that thought analysis that we, so that we can use the guide of like, okay, these are the cores of our community. Do we want to, want to make it easier to build here now? Or do we want to wait until some future day and say, either try to opt in later if that's not the case, or, uh, or work with it? Or use our, our own local zoning to keep the incentive on it, which could. Uh, and towns are hitting a lot of different things on that. So you're, so this, this, this project alone, or this decision alone will not be the one thing that makes a great project most of the time. But there will be a couple of projects that are out there in the either that could, that fifty thousand dollars of compliance work on at the beginning could be what takes a project from yesterday. Um, so that's the thing, maybe you consider, it's, and that's, and I can say that now because, like, I, I'm on the recommend chapter where they do have that is, that is sitting in the wings hoping for it to be a good expansion. Because that project cannot pencil without. So, so may I really say anything about this? Uh, your one B, you may subrate that project? You guys can have a project like that obviously in the wings, that may not be so urgent, but maybe there is. Uh, it's only this, the thing about whether, whether the, whether your, your hopeful assets of projects are.
Well, you mentioned that, uh, you think we have the office bandwidth to be able to encompass this. Uh, I'm, I'm worried about enforcement because we currently effectively are just all volunteers as far as our boards and commissions. We all make a small stipend, but effectively we're volunteers. And our zoning administrator is widely volunteered, gets stipend monthly, but he has to work a full-time job. So I'm just worried that if we try to take on something like this at the municipal level, that it may, it may be too much for our current zoning board and zoning administrator and town staff.
That's a very reasonable string and that alone could be enough to say, you know, the pot, the potential benefits may not be, be worth it because we're not sure that zoning vests anywhere. And, uh, and that's absolutely, absolutely reasonable. And, and as to anything else, we have very good reason to say, let's not pursue this. Because you don't want to, you want to risk something like this logging you down on one project and then enforcement. And the town becomes messy with just like little things that have added up that you have been, like, doing your research on. Beginning enforcement, if there's already this, uh, if there's already complaints about enforcement, that's a very good reason to not do this.
If we were to opt in, we would, should we supersede at two fifty or would they still, I think you said whoever, whoever a little bit more stricter would, would prevail?
So, so it wouldn't supersede two fifty, it's that you're using your own biops, your own zoning, which is already generally compliance, that's fifty, it's the governing act for all of them. And that, and saying, some of these things that are analysis or work that may be associated with some of these larger projects, our staff are going to be giving. So that is where the, the stat in the string is the, is one of the biggest mind inspects. It's why if you're smaller than you really are not, not that interested in doing this. Like, there are a couple of firms that are up there typically, like, Richard or Cat, they're, so like, they're paying for a land use. On a less voluntary basis than municipal.
Situation right, we've got these serves up pretty well as it's.
Yeah, if, if you, I, with towns like yours, I mean, we've, sometimes are really like anti-two fifty because two fifty is a top town to say government. Whereas some towns would say, hey, two fifty, we're doing some work that we could have to do. And in that regional oversight, it's helpful to us to let that focus on the smaller stuff, that's more of our run. So that's a very reasonable approach and, you know, I am neutral on this. If it's, if you're a town that really wants to do this, you want to help and get through it. But if this is a town that has a turn to, like, like, staffing capacity, we don't have to waste any more time. It, it's absolutely just kind of thing that, like, they did not try to push, push, a town like yours didn't really do this. Up here town, they'd be really disappointed in a county not doing this, or Manchester not doing this.
One concern that we faced is, um, the PEC. We may decide, that's it, they, they decided and they say, we, we, we can object to something, but, you know, maybe we say we get some substantial deference, but, you know, we get some say, but very limited. We don't want to get in a situation where we're running into that.
Well, the appeals process still would run through the state, so we wouldn't be the, the last stop. I mean, if you, any decision that a local boy has, it's still appeal.
And we're not surrendering our.
So you're, the only thing you're not, you're surrendering in this is the, the town's right to be part of the two fifty process because there is a, there's a, there's a process for that.
Or is, is the regional plan, is it taking our place in that?
So, so in that case, it, there just wouldn't be a diversity, you know, it'd be a local. So that would be not taking your place, it'd be just moving that layer of view. So because a two fifty project still needs local review, just they still have to get your local zoning process. It's just doing that and then doing that. So it's just taking that second layer of the cake off to, you know, make it be less.
So like us absorbing it, it takes one layer of regulation away, but it puts all that labor, time and effort that the state board will be doing and putting it down on us.
Exactly.
So I, I see what he's saying, like, with a project like he's mentioning in Shast where they're looking at another fifty thousand in costs that could make a break a project. I, I totally can see that. What I'm more worried about is the amount of, the amount of burden it would be putting on what we have for our board and commission. Like, I don't, my fear is, well, I don't want to say fear, my concern is that before we can grow our tax base to support it, we end up having to hire a full-time zoning administrator and end up almost having to go to at least a semi, semi-full-time zoning board or review board. Like, I don't want to see the town have to double its town staff with no tax base to support it.
Well, historically, how many projects have come to us to build? I mean, I'm just wondering realistically, what are we talking about here? I mean, wouldn't it be wonderful if three people came in and wanted to build a big project?
Yes, yes, that would be wonderful.
Um, it's not the case, so I'm, I'm, I keep going back and forth. If your argument is very salient, then I, and I understand what you're saying and I agree with it in terms of wanting to avoid the burden. But if the burden is essentially zero, then if we're making it more attractive for people to come to us, maybe it's worth it.
And I, and I love that side of the argument as well, that's why I like, I'm just verbally expressing it. Well, scientifically, because for me, that's how I find the water permissions. Yeah, like, any, any expanded growth that it could bring in potentially is a boon with the tax, tax limits, so.
Given all that, and given all the conversations we've had about the village center development and the nice project that B C R C gave and so forth, it seems like we should be limited on what we do. But if there's one place we did something, it would be there. And whether it's the purple only or whether it spans up and down the road, I mean, we can still do our zoning laws to allow more development in the pink stripe area without going to this.
Correct.
Um, so is there an advantage to attracting the kind of business we'd like to see in?
I think we come down to like, where if, if we're, if we're medium to unit housing, where we wanted them, is I guess what this, that's specifically what this would.
Not village center, yeah, I don't know. Probably be more out in the, in the periphery, I would think.
There's a lot of people thinking like down, obviously you don't have the infrastructure, but down past Winchester, down along that corner stretch down through there where there's virtually nothing, but we can.
No, yeah, um, yeah, there's, so when you're mapping this, in each of these levels of the six block areas, the centers and me in the old areas, there's one to three parcels that seem like, okay, we could maybe do all of it. Uh, there's a couple of parcels that have been working on between the road and river, but outside of the road, the flow of the river. There's a couple of parcels down in the fall, mostly pretty small. And there's a couple of parcels around here that, that you could maybe find a, a place of blind city, a, a seventy to ten unit. Um, that's the kind of thing you're talking about realistically, as we go, average thing to watch this one. And it's, okay, well, we're, you're effectively alone based on the administrative burden of what is potentially like twenty individual property max that really would be compatible for this kind of development. And, and, like, is someone going to come forward with a project on one of those kind of big areas that are in the gold centers and already have employees and typically would be cheap to serve, service system? Um, importantly, that's why this is so, it won't let you, like, fall out in any direction. It's really, it's being tied with the abilities so that it's forced to take the center as more of this. Um, but it's certainly something like, any user of one of these projects could be, yes, with the change of administrator burden. Do I say it's something that's going to create another administrative burden in a long-term pipeline to need to move to a full-time zoning administrator? Could it be loops, could it be create a little bit of need to move, say, from a site in a zoning administrator to a regular five to ten hour week zoning administrator akin to some of the towns, Shast or Arlington, or one of that. They're outward and they're, and they are known with a ten max of fifteen. So that, I don't think that, that twenty maximum projects over the course of a decade would, would be enough to do that. But it's hard to predict the state market and particularly allows the individual laners of some of these big enterprises. And do they want to sell?
So I just have a very slow light bulb, uh, we're talking all about residential, right? And it really, well, I've been.
Well, said residential and. But honestly, what it would most likely just be residential, would be my guess, but.
Or residential with a.
At least I've been thinking about for the village center and up along Route Seven, there is more convergent.
Yeah.
Um, and this doesn't really apply to the.
Doesn't help you at all.
Uh, no.
And really, two fifty struggles will apply to a lot of commercial development anyway, unless it's more than like ten acres. Uh, so.
Well, we could pick and choose what area we want to try to apply it to, if my understanding is correct.
You could, but ultimately it's still in this case.
Yes, well, that's what I'm saying, if like, we decide like, you know what, this would be a great fit.
Yeah, you're something, you could absolutely be guided by this stuff or, or we can set up, or in a future map, maybe we hope that, that town center stands for, uh, to accomplish some commercial center, commercial that is serving that. That would, I could see myself back with maybe some of you guys in eight years, um, talking, uh, talking about exactly that kind of areas. Um, but, yeah, absolutely, it's kind of thing that, these aren't as forward looking as your doctors.
I would say, uh, just from a building aspect of, um, and a contractor, you building and that kind of stuff. Uh, I don't see projects that big going in right away, only because of the fact that even if we have sewer that they can hook to. You say we had enough flows that they could hook to, the water flow on top of that by state regulation is a lot per unit. So they're going to have to have either a big system set up like the trailer parks are doing now to get that supply, that the big tanks, uh, and at that level, you have to have all of the, um, filtration and that kind of stuff there to come into. It's not like a single, or a family.
Not to a ready-made infrastructure.
Yeah, and, yeah, you're talking in public water system with a capital P, capital D, and, um.
It falls under that when you start hitting those higher levels of units, you have to get into filtration or ordination and that kind of stuff. And a system that can supply it.
No, it's a very weird, like, in a big town, these concerns all might, because they have that water. In a, in a town your size, you're talking about, like, sub public water system, unit counts of, of fifteen units, seven eight. Um, which is why you're, that's almost your cap on this in your realistic context. Because public water systems are expensive. I've looked at, at, that's part of all the projects and it's, you know, they're distorted and it's expensive. So realistically, you're talking six to fifteen units that this thought is applying to the max.
And I have very few parcels where it even makes sense.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it.
So it kind of sounds like we're talking ourselves out of, out of doing this, but it really seems like it's not.
I think our discussions have kind of led us to, um, any development that we see happening is going to be very incremental. And, uh, and I think we're always going to be testing to see if we're maybe impacting our town.
I want to be proven wrong.
Yes, so.
Absolutely. Uh, no, we'll take that as a sense of committee and, and we'll stop pursuing this with your town. And that's it, but we, we wanted to give you the opportunity to say no rather than we hit the end of the process.
Well, you can, the board does the ultimate say, I mean, if you want, we can send you before the select board and they can make the ultimate.
I would rather, I would trust the sense of the planning commission, if the planning commission is nearby, like it is right now, it sounds like. I'm going to probably more or less need an N S S planning commission that you guys will want to ultimately link you where she's, says she did know, it's like we're dancing.
Should we, should we formally, can we vote?
Um, you don't need to, but if you want to.
I mean, we don't have to vote if we want it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, but, but not voting.
But it's probably good to have in our record that the consensus was not to conform.
Yeah, yeah.
Period. And what's the deadline for a decision?
We're going to say the end of the year, uh, if.
The end of twenty twenty-five.
End of twenty twenty-five, using, it could be end of twenty-six if we really were pushing it. But we're going to say the end of twenty-five as the deadline.
But just to throw around something, the.
I love this.
Like, the door will not close formally, like, this, because it's part of our regional plan process, that's why there's sort of a timeline, because we'll be. That's why there's sort of a timeline, because we'll be submitting our regional plan for approval next spring. But the state is going to develop. A process for towns to opt in outside of our regional plan process, so if. Three years from now, you kind of change your heart and you wanna pursue this. You don't have to wait for us to do another regional plan, so it's, it's like, now is a great time. If if it were of interest, but it's not like.
You're not even gonna wait to see.
You're not like Fox.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's nice to know, but things change. We can always try to get back.
All and and what it could take would be like, someone came to land with a project, I wanted to do this, this is compelling to us. But we need this and, yeah, but.
The projects are gone.
Yeah, if 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 we're in that situation, we just now come back to us and we'll get you. But, yeah, that's very, very helpful. We appreciate the conversation on this because. Frankly, the commonwealth is one hardest conversation with us, you actually. Hard hard decision. Water comes free, it's a really big one, um, and that's not as true anywhere except for LinkedIn in the county. Maybe a little bit in South, but really from the whole of the town, like how the water, like you guys have, and really. And that's really good context for when we're having this conversation about service, but I really thank you for your time.
Quick question, uh, I don't know enough about the process for getting the grant to get in with you, but is that? Has everything been done on our side or is there anything else we should be doing?
That our colleague Scott has been in touch with, I think, Tara or Hannah or both, and it sounds like. All the application materials, like Nick and Scott took a look, gave some notes, but that. It seems like you're ready to submit the materials now.
The other request I had was that wonderful map that you put up there, having the roads and sewer line on there.
Yeah, I'll serve the map with the roads and sewer lines, um, with that in mind, if. We, if you end up wanting to to tweet those maps in any way, once I've sent them, that window is still open to do that the next couple of months. So, but we wanna try and get that app by, say, the end. So I'll I'll send that back to you guys. If anyone has any revisions, you can just, um, reply to us, but I'll send them, yeah, map, uh, roads and.
I I appreciate you guys coming down and giving the presentation. One small critique, though. For future efforts, if you bring a map. Put a key on it.
Yeah, I I didn't wanna confuse you with too much discussion of the F O U's, but, yeah.
Alright, you guys wanna take a vote on it? It doesn't sound like we have to, but if we put on a. Yeah, I mean, how's how's everybody feel? You guys wanna have a discussion on it or at least just blow on record?
I'm very serious. Oh, okay, well, we didn't say that.
Yeah, okay. Well, uh, well, do you wanna call for just a roll call vote then at least? Well, what are we on record?
Given, given the conversation that happened, I mean, we said you hear your.
It would be beneficial, you know, for the developer coming by that has less regulation.
Well, that's certainly true, and as I heard at the concern.
Know we haven't had that situation here, but we can. It's possible to happen in the next five to ten years. And, uh, you know, I think a developer would like to not be governed by all that, you know, benefit.
React until when you look into it yourself, if the person came to town here and they wanted to, uh, do something. When they go to the town office and ask about what we just heard and they say, yes, whatever. They look like they're gonna do anything in three years, you know, I mean, three years from now, you could get in, get into this. So it isn't, you know, anything really pressing, but I don't I don't give a damn if I vote for it or don't. You know.
Figure part of that one that we can go back in or give it to the elders, you know, so.
Yeah, it doesn't actually close the door completely, it's just, this is their arbitrary deadline for them compiling the reports.
It's not a closed issue board, so if we have somebody come along and said, I want this.
Well, what what really convinced me was when you were saying the the amount of properties that it would actually even really apply to, given our infrastructure. Like, it's gonna be very limited. Yeah, it's not that bad. But.
I mean, it's it's.
Which doesn't sound like most of we wanna do. Can you opt back out of it?
Well, that was a good question. We should have asked while they were here.
Let's say we didn't like it, you know, and it wasn't beneficial.
Well, so the interesting thing here that says after the interim Act two fifty exemptions is fired. Development projects will be subject to standard Act two fifty jurisdictions regarding community complete change effect. One eighty-one, uh. Let's see, N R B will continue to enforce Act two fifty permits and conditions in tier one areas. That's as far as will our municipality have to enforce existing Act two fifty conditions. Uh, within tier one A, it said that if you fail to enforce it. Act two, you know, the state basically would step in and do it if the municipality fails to do so. Yeah, right there, sorry. I lost my spot. I was going by memory just then. Uh, in approved tier one areas, the enemy will no longer enforce permit conditions unless municipality fails to do so.
I'm I'm for.
I mean, so if if we, basically, if you choose not to do it, the state's gonna step in and do it. Well, I I don't I don't see the need for us to change this value right now. But we can always, we can always enter into it at a later date if, you know, like you said, you know, the golden project shows up. We can opt in and it's solid, don't jump through hoops to get us into the program.
Right, yeah, well, you know, I appreciate what you're saying about, you know, trying to encourage development. We seem to want that one better tax space, et cetera, and this might help encourage it. But realistically, the parcels that are available are so limited. Maybe you've got two or three acres here, maybe you've got ten acres there, but without water, then that's an expensive project anyway. It, uh, you know, it doesn't seem like it gains us much and and the concern about our role and responsibility. If anybody comes and asks, we have to do work, whether or not the project moves forward. Whereas right now, the state does the work and we haven't put any extra burden on them. We just are leaving the burden exactly as it's been for the last however many years since Act two fifty one ended. And telling unless someone comes with a big project and says, I'm not gonna move forward unless you get this, which probably can go again.
Well, they might not even know if that's a bill.
Well, if somebody's planning a big project, I bet they thought through this. Maybe I'm wrong, I mean.
Like, I would imagine they've hired lawyers and engineers who help dig into it, figure out what they're gonna need to do. Like, I don't I don't see this as. As like one guy doing it out of his basement to figure out for. Well, the thing that the exemptions to me are so narrow and focused, it's. If it was a more wide open exemption to where, you know, it could apply toward different businesses and not just residential. Unit housing and mixed use, then I would, I think I would be more in favor of it. But it's just. It's too obvious that it doesn't apply to enough properties in town.
I'm not sure about even looking for anybody. Big to come come along, somebody with deep pockets to come along and and. But it never done some big thing. Because at some point, it's gonna be abandoned, just like we used to have a little big thing.
Well, no, we're talking, we're talking residential, so, you know, like the high road was probably often in the sixes.
Stipendate, wants to put, you know, twenty units up.
Of of these parcels working.
Well, that's what you said, like, it's so, there's so few properties that that would actually apply to. Yeah, water also. Yeah, and these exemptions only apply to areas where there's either sewer or water. And if it's an area with water and a sewer, then they have to have the soil, the soil has to, you know, reach for the soil that can absorb.
Bring me land actually, really, is across from Berington.
Across from what?
Berington's farm, that's ten acres there, fourteen acres there.
That's not conservatory?
I don't know what, the the lady owns the land is the cyclone.
Oh, okay, that, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about. That this part.
Water is.
Yeah.
And it's close to the water over there, across the street from it, and it's, um, a nice beach.
Yeah.
I mean, you picture what the hell, I mean, they only got land, I know the sale was ten acres across from me, and it's kind of. Fifty acres up there, you know, brown road.
But no sewer, no.
I know, I know.
So.
There's water on that side.
There's water available, they can build there, but this wouldn't help them.
No, no, I I I'm saying that, what's the sale?
That's that's the difference of where it's at, so if you've got spots off the system, they're, they're gonna go through all the steps normal. Everything is already in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, um. We don't have consensus, but I think we have a majority.
Well, see, if we don't have a vocal consensus, I think we probably should at least blow on record.
I believe because they they need a, um, motion in a second.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we vote to not join the Act one eighty-one two one to one B. Exemption board. Uh, plan, planning framework.
Well, this was over the slicking, right?
No.
No, if we, if we were to say, in my understanding, if we said, yes, we're interested. The select, we would pass it to the select board with our endorsement, and then they would make the final decision. I mean, the select board could step in and overrule us, but without our recommendation, so I guess, uh, let me amend my motion. It could still go there, and I mean, we could let them know that we discussed it and we're not giving our recommendation, but I guess, I mean, you said my motion, make a new motion. I vote that we advise the select board to not approve joining this.
I'm saying. I favor.
You favor, well, Fred, you have a motion in second on the table.
All in favor?
Of the motion.
Of the motion.
I'll oppose. Okay, so it's a four one decision, so will you kindly let the select board know that our decision regarding this is to not join? But let them know it is ultimately their decision.
Yeah.
It was, I'm glad the state's finally, after forty years, started to try to revamp the system and realize they've overburdened people with it. I I do wish that. But I would, I would like to see them more broaden the scope of that. But, you know. Exactly, you know. Take an issue. Maybe, I mean. At least, at least target it. You know, I mean, I, you know. I mean, I understand the premise behind two fifty, that they didn't want to have wide open urban sprawl, they didn't wanna have the landscape being destroyed. And just like, you know, mansions flying up everywhere, I I totally get that, they wanna keep the character of the land, but.
Perfect, we do.
Well, they were gonna put sewer and top sewers over in Alamo, that's where it started. Alamo.
Is that what started it?
Yes, Act two fifty started in Alamo, and we're gonna build it. Layers, like on Anthony, the river's in, uh, sewer's gonna go.
It was a mess.
That's what, that's what started all two fifty. I remember where we went.
My understanding was always that it was to help stop urban sprawl.
Well, urban sprawl, but that's. You know, that's where the ski line starts years ago, Alamo, New Delhi, and so it's.
So they'll be here October seventh. And I will put them first on the agenda. I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add, or if you just wanna kinda leave it open for them, not knowing how long it'll be, but it's up to you.
Part of what's on the agenda here is a question again, um, I think it is winged then.
Yeah.
I think we should at least have some baseline questions. Before I have an academic question, we go. Well, I, well, pick like five, five definitive questions you definitely wanna ask them, because I don't wanna bring them in here. That have a situation where everybody's afraid to say something, or everybody gets tongue-tied, and they feel like they've just suddenly wasted their time.
So specifically, I I'm gonna know, um, the status. Current status of, um, where our school stands.
So you wanna, you wanna specifically ask Cindy, has a member of the school board, her official position? So I think you should, recommendation, I think you should forward that to her ahead of time. Because if she's gonna be in here speaking on behalf of the school board, she's going to have permission from the school board if they have any definitive plans. Otherwise, she's just giving a opinion as a process.
Basically, I just. My interest is having her, I don't, I don't think I want her on online to 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 speak. About school, the school. What about school board, what is it, business? Well, the super.
Well, we wanna know the status of the school, you you know, it's changing now. And a lot of the changes are coming from the new superintendent, from Ford.
Well, between the superintendent and the regulations, the state's putting down the consolidation. But it's, concerns is not written.
I'm concerned till the law happened, or we stood this happened, and we 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 were, we had our school taken, basically. By force, force consolidation, right? But then Act forty-six was a bust, they came up with another act, then they came up with another act, so we're like four acts long road. And so all we can, right now, we don't know what the status is of the future.
Yeah, we're we're just looking to see, well, I know, I'm, I'm looking to get some kind of feeling like how likely is Pommel to end up closing. Because if Pommel is going to end up closing, then I think we would need to pursue like what you've mentioned. Designating that as an education hall and sometimes by the zoning definition, that if the school district decides to sell that property. It can't be used for everything by. That way it ties their hands, they can't just sell it to a developer who wants to turn it into a apartment.
You know, that's a really interesting question, but, you know, to what you're saying, I mean, I'm going back to what you said a couple meetings ago. Well, you wanna have a senior center or a senior home, then that building could be.
We don't wanna like that.
Well, I I hear you, I hear you, but I'm sitting. If this disappears, I mean, none of us want that to happen, none of us want that to happen, but if it does. What's the best thing for the town in that situation? And I think there's a lot of conversation happening in that.
I think, I think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't either pursue, uh, anything optional other than.
Well, we can't really get it happening, it's all hypothetical.
Yeah, a million things could happen. But that's.
You know, it it's sounding out, nothing's really firm, because it's a two-year plan. For raising taxes, closing some schools, uh, throughout the state and involves a lot of things.
You see, that's what I'd like to get details of, what is this two-year plan, what does it look like, what is it entail, who would be looking at? That's the question, I guess, that I would.
They also fire is in build a super school for all, all around the town of the seven.
What's the schools of, all these small schools, that's the community, that's right, it's by toes in half.
Well, and from my understanding, it's gonna be a lot of consolidation of like administrative staff, there's gonna be a lot more shit that they draw. As far as like counselors, maintenance staff, like, you know, stuff like that, you know, with. People there answer phones, maintain IT networks, we're gonna be consolidating a lot of that. I mean, maybe they'll get to the point where they start closing like the schools that only have like thirty kids total across, you know, like six grades. Especially if there's an option within a reasonable driving distance, so. I don't know how they would define reasonable, but.
Well, they got the new school, many people just accommodate, you know, hospital school, it was built to do that.
Yeah, and and the junior high was already gonna pull this, pull the sixth grade out, but we managed to get an exemption for that, but. That we're gonna be losing sixth grade out of Pommel in the next couple of years regardless. That we're gonna be losing sixth grade out of Pommel in the next couple of years regardless.
Right.
I mean, this school is, things are going on and.
But I mean, yo.
Everything they've tried so far for, for education, to fix the education system in this state, has not worked.
I mean, it 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 may not affect Pommel at all, because don't forget, you've got a large chunk of Bennington on South Street Road where Pommel would actually be a closer school for them. So it might be, yeah, we might lose sixth grade, but they might roll another thirty, forty kids out of Bennington into Pommel off those older street roads.
Thousand different.
Yeah.
Things could happen. I think getting into a debate about what should or shouldn't happen is really useless. I wanna just be educated on what is the current, uh, plan they're working on? What's the timeline? What kind of things might happen? Just give us that. Because we're not in a position to.
Yeah.
Argue about what should or shouldn't.
Absolutely.
I agree with that.
You know, government may go.
So maybe Cindy heard that as a request. This is what we're asking for. It's just to explain to us where we are and where we're going, what you concede, what, what are their requirements you've been told.
Yeah, we know. Maybe there's some information that she had, a lot of the, would the school board break down? Share. Yeah.
I'm, I'm believing more.
I really just don't wanna put her on the spot and get her in trouble and have her divulging stuff that may discuss. No, we can't get into specifics.
No.
Yeah, whatever she can legally or comfortably share.
That's very good.
As far as.
Ask the right questions.
Beyond that, as far as that, that school and that property goes, that's what's still down at the Pommel.
Maybe get her and Nelson's opinion about the idea of zoning change to that area. That's kind of doesn't actually.
She got some just the personal.
Yeah, Nelson might have some insight at the state level and it might be like, actually, he might say, you can't do that for X, Y, Z reason.
I mean, I know, well, I'm sure you got me thinking about it, was the fact that Bennington, most of the city town plan created some special zones. They, they specifically wanted for special zones, they created them. They got L and B, C, R, C, D, so if they can create a special zone.
Well, then there's no reason why we can't. Well, when we get the next municipal planning grant to help us finish crafting the town plan. And that is something that I think we should absolutely pursue now.
Changing that to, that zoning to be a school campus is, is a way to slow down any, any other process that anybody else could benefit from. Where we took our school, should not have a right to sell it for a million dollars. They took it for a dollar. So they think that they're done, maybe they'll sell it back for a dollar.
Well, this is back, but this would be an interesting question.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know?
All good things to keep in mind for asking down the south. Alright, well.
So our next meeting agenda is to listen. We're having a big discussion with Cindy and Nelson.
Yep.
Kind of open-ended, um, we are, we're all sensitive. We don't wanna play and lay that in spot.
Information and some opinions, whatever they feel comfortable sharing, discussing, I guess.
No.
Educating. Yeah.
Know them very well. They're good people.
I don't know very well. I'd like to get them on better.
So we're looking to public comment.
What are the odds?
No, there's nobody today.
I bet you Jim is stupid right now.
He wasn't at early, so I don't.
Oh, I think he's here. Well, we all know his address.
That's not on the record.
I'm sorry, Jim. Alright, make the motion.
All in favor?